Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order our council workshop for Tuesday, July 9th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, if you take role.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dole.
I'm present.
Councilmember Karafotis.
Here.
Councilmember Squires.
Show councilmember Squires absent and excused.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch. We have a quorum of six.
Thank you. Okay, item three is Radcliffe Center. Presentation by our Parks and Recreation Director, Erica Smith.
Okay. Good evening, Council Mayor. I'm going to start by sharing some information. And we're going to have a presentation up on the screen, but this is a hard copy of the presentation. You'll see the red tab. That's going to be where the comprehensive financials, 27 pages of financials. I think you've all seen it, but I wanted you to have a copy tonight. So let's get started, slideshow. Next. Okay. I'm going to share what my goals are. We're going to look at the timeline and the funding sources. Examine the work and financials to date. I'll provide a status on remaining funds and grants. And we'll be identifying remaining work priorities and hopefully leaving with next steps. Next slide is a timeline. I apologize a lot. On there, I'm going to kind of walk us through. This is just, again, kind of taking us back. May of 2022 is when Radcliffe becomes city property in July. DPW, our task, to do some demo work and begin preparing rooms so that the recreation programs can move over from Maplewood to Radcliffe. At this time, the funding source is described as ARPA, which we'll talk much more about here soon. I'm just previewing it. That's kind of identified as initial renovations. At that time, there is a heavy pursuit of grants and additional funding. Tonight, we're going to review Wayne County CDBG fund source, the HUD Omnibus federal funding, and the Wayne County ARPA funds. So I'm going to dive into those because they're really important to all aspects of this topic. Moving into 2023, those grants are now, they've been awarded. We're seeing multiple people in the Parks and Recreation Director. We start off with an interim. A new person's hired, but by the end of the year, we're back to an interim. So a lot of instability in the Parks and Rec position. While a lot of work, a lot of spending is happening at Radcliffe. This is 2023. A lot of things happening. I could see that there was requests for budget, maybe updates on spending. That was starting to happen in 2023. In '24, a few key highlights. There was a grand opening in May. I came on board about seven weeks ago. And right around the same time, the past city manager was leaving, and now we have an interim city manager. Here we are in July. You guys are looking for budget information, grant status, and I think revisiting priorities and looking at work to do. Let's go to the next slide. This is, again, I'm going to dive into these more so, but I want to introduce them. The original funding source was presented as ARPA, but it really quickly moved into a general fund balance as capital. And that's where it sat, and that's where most of the spending to date has come from. The Wayne County CDBG, that was an early grant being shared in kind of late 2022 with the $200,000 amount tied to it and tied to some specific rooms. That Wayne County ARPA, this is the $4 million with a 1 million city match. And the HUD, which has several different names. So HUD is the administrative sort of body of this grant. Omnibus was the presidential act that put it into the congressional records. And then it's really known as community project funding. CPF is what it currently is. That was the 2.1 million. Another two funding sources. The FRC and the Food Pantry have different accounts. They have a donation account and some other funds that were tapped in to provide some of the cost. So this is a look at all of those funding sources. Tonight is mostly diving into the grants and that original fund source. So let's go to the next slide. So to jump right to kind of current date, 2.64 million has been spent at Radcliffe. That, 27 pages of itemized charges are in the little packet. I believe you guys got this. It is a little overwhelming to just look in and to look at. And I know when I looked at it, there's a lot of questions. Okay, well, what did we spend per room? What is the spending that qualifies for grant reimbursement? How are we monitoring where we overspend? And, you know, are we adjusting budgets accordingly? And then, of course, where are we? What is left and what are our projects and priorities to be completed? So right now in this moment, this is a really important time to pause and review with key leadership changes. The city manager that left, myself being new in parks. There's been a lot of lessons learned, I would say, both from, I think, operationally, the staff being at Radcliffe that are experiencing maybe some of the challenges of the mechanical systems or some of those bigger items that maybe weren't understood in the beginning. Lessons learned in how we should be recording, how we should be sharing back, what you all need to be informed of. These are all lessons that we're reflecting on and need to consider moving forward. It's also an appropriate time to revisit the vision, the original vision, the one that for, like, got us the grants, you know, that had an important role. But we have to adjust, and we have to take this moment and consider all these things and adjust our vision. And then finally, we need to present a budget and a plan for moving forward. Okay, so let's go to the next slide. Again, here we are, July 2024, assessing project budget and goals. And there's really three key factors that are very important for us to be considering. One, there are some higher than anticipated costs. There's been overspending. So that's just a fact. That's not abnormal. You just need to adjust. We need to evaluate the priorities. And especially for myself, being responsible for operational budgets and moving forward, I'm thinking about operational sustainability. What are the things that are most important for us to have in this facility moving forward for the community and for the things that are most important? So these are factors that need to be considered. And then thirdly is meeting those grant requirements and compliance. It is one thing to get that award letter, and it's another thing to get that reimbursement money. There is a lot of things that happen in between, and we really need to get focused on what those compliant items are. Next slide. All right, so where do we go from here? I think understanding the grants and available funding is a necessary starting point. So we're going to go to the next slide and dive into what has been our primary funding source to date. So $2.7 million of federal ARPA money was allocated to Garden City back in 2022. This money came in at the very end of the 2022 fiscal year, and it was classified as revenue loss. So this was money that the federal government was reimbursing cities and counties for their operating costs during COVID, right? So some of those police or fire things that were already expended, but now there's a reimbursement coming in. So many cities handled this in different ways, and it is important to recognize that ARPA, this was a new sort of occurrence. Most people in government had not gotten big amounts of ARPA before, so there wasn't, you know, clear, I guess, steps or precedent for dealing with this kind of money. Like many cities, well, hold on, let me go back. So at the end of June of 2022, these ARPA funds were included in fund balance assigned to capital projects. There were several projects designated to receive funding at that time. So I don't know what was provided in writing. I just know there was kind of this idea, police, fire, Radcliffe, City Hall had some existing capital projects, that this was like, okay, this is what we want to use it for. And this was primarily a decision driven by the city manager. And again, a lot of cities did it differently, but this was a fairly, I would say, fairly common handling, is that there's always a lot of capital projects waiting for funding in cities. So what ended up happening with that 2.7 million, it's in capital, it's in general fund capital, police, there's a roof, some HVAC, I think just under a million, goes to those projects. And Radcliffe starts off, I think, being about a million. And by the time you see there's another grant that comes in for fire, so then that money's kind of shifted to Radcliffe. So what we really see shake out is this up here. So Radcliffe has really got almost 1.3. And this is, again, funding all those initial projects. So if we go to the next slide. Again, sorry, this is kind of small. A lot of work in the beginning was really done by our DPW staff, the demo work. And then some of this money that's in capital, general fund, is designated to start working on the hallways, the dance rooms, the offices, the vets' rooms, a lot of these initial rooms that back in 2022, there was some proposed budgets that went along with these. So I won't go through all the rooms, but these are some of the rooms that didn't have huge renovations, but they started, I mean, there were projects for sure. The dance room was pretty intense, some of that teen tech room, and there were some items done for head start and some kind of building-wide changes. So next slide. This, what this is, I know you guys can't see it. So there was an email in August of 2022 from city manager to council that included a financial update at that time. And it was really sort of laying out some of these projects that I just touched on and that this was the money that was going to be used to complete these. A lot of this initial sort of energy was coinciding with efforts to go get grants. And sometimes you've got to show that things are happening. So there's a lot of things happening at once. And this was an update that went in August of 2022, which was followed by a presentation in September. And if we go to the next slide, this presentation, next slide. This is the early forecasting of some of these rooms. And I apologize if you can't see this, but these are screenshots or slides that were in this 2022 presentation. So I'm showing them just as sort of, I think, kind of the last point where there was some budgets and some designations, and you guys were seeing this in a council presentation. So a lot of these rooms did move ahead. And again, they're kind of labeled, well, they're not kind of, they were labeled as ARPA Phase 1. And again, ARPA was that origination source, but it was really in the general fund capital at this time. So this work is going on. Let's go to the next slide. And again, this is sort of just stepping back. We see a lot of things happening. Some of these areas are getting overspent. I could not really see any circling back of reporting on actuals or making any adjustments. And really, there appeared to not be a known budget. There was a vision and a lot of things happening. At the same time, you have that instability in the parks leadership. So this is just sort of the context of what's occurring again with that original $1.3 million. So let's keep going, next slide. So while that is off and going, in the same presentation in September of 2022, we see a funding source labeled Wayne County. We've added CDBG because that's more accurate. This was a funding source identified and verbally agreed upon, and it was intended to focus on the senior activities in rooms. So we see the senior fitness, the adult game room, and the computer lab as being packaged for this money, and spending takes off. It's highlighted in the presentation. And just to report back on that status, we're still pursuing this and looking for what, we haven't located anything in writing or an agreement. So how this happens is a bit of a mystery. I mean, I think there was a lot of vision pursuing, and this very important detail was just not followed up on. So here we are in 2024, still working to make the case and show the work and show the services that this is bringing to seniors so that we can still try to get this money. So the update is that Matt is in touch with the CDBG staff, and we're hoping to be able to get some of that reimbursed. We have all of the spending recorded and available. So this is what happened to this. We'll go to the next slide. Okay, now we're going to talk a little bit about the Wayne County ARPA. So again, a lot of federal ARPA money is coming to governments, counties. Counties are distributing it to cities and municipalities. So we become a subrecipient. And again, there was a lot of work before this was announced. So there was a lot of effort showing the money that Garden City was putting in already. So all of that previous money is being used to really leverage a grant because this grant came with a 1 million match requirement. So this is occurring, I would say, in kind of middle to the end of 2022. We see an agreement is executed on February 8th of 2023. And what you can't see very well is just a screenshot of the agreement and the webpage that's really announcing some of these grant recipients. So we're on there. So let's go to the next slide. Okay. Again, this is a $4 million to achieve the goals and actions in the scope of work as outlined in Exhibit A. So Exhibit A is straight out of the grant agreement. It was part of that application and those requests for funds. The next screen will really show that green box, which is the sort of the budget for the scope of work that was being, that's in the agreement. And that's important when we start talking about reimbursement. Okay? A couple of key things I want to share again. There is a 1 million match requirement to this, and with this is a proposed reconstruction budget, and that's what you see in the green box. Again, the next slide will show that more clearly. There are, but let's go back because there's a couple points. The project timeline requirements. There is a requirement to expend 70% of the grant by the end of October of this year. So that would be $2.8 million. And then the full amount needs to be expended by the end of October of next year. Okay? So the status right now, we have 1.1 million of spending to date that qualifies for reimbursement. And this is based on the eligibility time, so after February 8th, and it somehow fits into the scope of work in the agreement. We have not submitted for a single thing of reimbursement to date. However, we have been meeting with the county regularly to get the submission format and all of the requirements for how we submit to get the reimbursements. So we are working, we have several projects identified that we're going to do in lumps to get started on the reimbursement. So again, I think that's just many things happening. Again, you don't have a director sort of following up on details, and things just get going, and now suddenly, we haven't been, you know, we haven't done that aspect of the grant, which some would say is the most important aspect. The million-dollar match, you know, we have shown before the agreement was signed and even since, a commitment from the general fund capital. So that match has been met. Okay, we don't have any issues showing that. The roof repair is likely to push us over this 70% number. So this is putting us in good position to meet that first deadline, and then we would have the 1.2 left for the year, which we will not, you know, we can do that. So this is in good shape. We have just started putting together the reimbursement stuff. Let's look at that next slide with the green box. So again, this is, what you see there is a project scope straight out of the application or the agreement. There's a proposed column, and then there's the actual. So the proposed is, you know, back in 2022, we see the gymnasium. And, you know, something to keep in mind too is when these projects and these grants were being pursued, they were similar applications that were going to HUD, that were going to Wayne County. And so we kind of threw out a lot of stuff, not we, but our previous city manager was just throwing stuff out there trying to get this funding. And so then we get it. We have an agreement with Wayne County for these items. But we can see very quickly that there are some things that are just underbudgeted. The roof, I wish we could get that done for 510,000. Our preliminary estimate is about 1.5. So when we get numbers like that, we're looking at this list, and we're looking at the gym, right? That's the biggest ticket. And so again, reexamining priorities. You can see to the right, these are numbers that are just sorted through, you know, this spreadsheet. It is not perfect because if you look through this, there's not a systemic sort of labeling. You know, for example, even when I'm searching for all the theater costs, you know, we spell theater one way half the time, another way this way. So it's a lot of searching to find these items and to compile them just to give us some context for where we are and what we can get reimbursed for. So you'll see, we have spent money on the gymnasium, the architectural stuff, the roof repairs that have been made are on there. There's been a lot of work on HVAC. And again, I know that this is missing things because I just learned another coding for, you know, a different list in here. Some of the work that started in the imagination station, and then that teen tech room, which really started expanding and became esports, spaceport, and movie theater. And, you know, 90,000 was the start. It's, you know, 350,000 at a, probably a conservative, again, not being able to pull out every little thing. And then the furniture flooring category, there's a number, the yellow is kind of a holding spot for some other spending that we can fit in there, like the card room. So that one is just basically saying, we've still got identified that 150,000 in what is that right column, which is the reimbursable expenses. But if you total that all up, you get to about 1.1. So this is that list of what we're looking to get reimbursed on. I don't know if we want to talk more about the gym now and how, I mean, we'll get more into it with the HUD grant more specifically. This one, we've worked with the grant team, and we said, what do we do when we overspend? And how do we, you know, work this? And we just need to provide them budgets and numbers and explanations. So this one, you know, for a lot of us at Radcliffe, DPW, I think most of the community would like to see the roof fixed. So let's keep going on this, and I know you've guys probably have questions. You can ask them now, or we can kind of try to get through it. Because, next slide. Okay, the HUD. So HUD, which is, had Omnibus name, and now it's the community project funding. In quotes, you see Garden City Community Center Rehabilitation Project. That's an important title of our project. That's what's in the congressional records. That's the name of our project, and that will come up as important later. What this is, is just a screenshot of an email that was announcing this to city councils saying, great news, this funding has come through. It's a done deal. So this was at the very end of December. And again, this is through Congressional Representative Talisha Rashad. Rashida Tlaib. Tlaib, I apologize. So this is very exciting. Then I think, let's see, next slide, we get an award letter in March. And to be honest, I don't think anything happened since March of 2023, up until about a month ago. So I really, this was one of the first things I was very interested in. We needed to understand where this was. And with everything happening with the roof and the gym, reexamining what this funding can support and what are the parameters of this and so forth. So yes, we have an award letter, and we have a whole series of grant application package that has not been completed. So we are in the very, very early stages. This is a very complex, technical, tedious, lengthy federal grant. There are hours of videos, webinars, modules, cohorts to join, grant guides, there's a portal to sign up with, website, many things that exist to assist in executing this grant. Some of the key things when I started looking at it, because right away, I wanted to understand what's in our agreement. And we don't really have an agreement. We have an original request that gave a project scope, and it was very heavy on the second half of the gymnasium, right? Our letters of support were on that. You know, it was just a very important part of our application. So before I could even get to that question, I stumbled upon the most important requirement, which is called environmental review. Any HUD grant is going to require this. Okay? So I think my next slide, I'll talk about it. So the environmental review and the project scope change question are really these like two key items that are like, okay, we need to, I need to know what's going on. So let's go to the next slide. I'm going to talk first about the environmental review requirement. Again, this is a HUD-required just component to ensure that anything that they're funding complies with NEPA, which is the National Environmental Policy Act. So an ER, as it's known, is the process of reviewing a project and its potential environmental impacts to determine whether it meets federal, state, and local environmental standards. So ideally, this occurs right after we're given that award letter or that, actually, that federal NEXUS date, which was December of 29th of 2022. It should precede any renovation, any work, anything that's involved in the entire project that it's related to. So you think for a second, okay, well, we were doing some demo back in 2022 before we even applied for this. So sorting through all of that is just complex, but it is good that we've been on a pause because we do need to address this. We are, I am in contact with many different people on this. There's the Congressional Chief of Staff from Rashida Tlaib's office, the Federal Grant Coordinator, the HUD Field Environmental Officer to help me sort through the immediate priorities and the immediate next steps. What we don't want to do is make these choice-limiting actions that jeopardize our funding because we didn't do it in the right order. So it's not uncommon that we have multiple grants, we have projects going before this. It just adds to the level of complexity. One really good thing that I have heard from the environmental officer is that, oh, this is a more simple project, as it is now, especially for not expanding the footprint at all. When you're, you know, for many projects that got this funding, they've got new land, and they're, you know, you've got to do a lot, a lot of study on this environmental impact. You know, we're taking over an existing building, so it's sort of a different category. And I, you know, I'm learning a lot about this every day on this, but... But once we sort of get this started, then we can move ahead with our actual application, which will outline the project narrative, the budget, and what they call the required standard forms. So with this, there is still, let's see, I think it's my next slide. There is still, nope, nope, let's go back really quick. Yeah, so the project scope, wait, where did I, there was something I was going to say. Maybe I'll come back to it. So that's on the environmental review, which right now has kind of been my main priority. But I'm also working on the change of scope instruction. And I think that's going to come up, actually, hold on. Sorry, sorry, guys. There's a lot I want to share. So one important thing to go back to the name of our project, which is the Garden City Community Center renovation project, that is what is in the congressional records and it's called the JES statement. It's a joint explanatory statement. And if we do a project change in scope, so in other words, what we can't do, or at least not easily, is say, you know what, actually, we want to add a couple floors to the fire department and we're going to change this project or we're going to build something. That would be very, very difficult. I cannot say with 100% certainty that we're not tied to a gym build. But what I have gathered is that everybody wants to see this money spent and to see it, you know, do something in our community. And, you know, the, because we haven't fully, you know, applied, our project scope is a little bit vague. I'm just having, I am having trouble still determining where we are with this. My gut is telling me we can, we can make an adjustment based on everything that we're doing and accomplishing if that money needs to go to something else. Because now we really only have half of a gym with this money and we still have other priorities being identified. So this is something we'll talk about when we get to the section on what's left to do. I don't know if that was as comprehensive as I wanted to be, but I think they'll touch on a few other things. So let's keep going to the next slide. Okay, a recap. So that general fund capital, that 1.29, that's been spent. The ARPA 4 million, we've spent 1.1 million getting ready to reimburse, get reimbursement for it. That leaves us 2.9 million. We have not spent anything of HUD and we are very optimistic that 2.1 is there for us. The Wayne County CDBG, we've spent 200,000. We are working on getting that reimbursed. Some miscellaneous, again, are those other sources where money was taken from for furniture costs from the FRC and food pantry. So when you add that up, you get pretty close to 2.64. It's not a perfect, if you add it up there. But what it's showing us is we have 5 million left from this sort of snapshot. And that 2.6 again is what is in the back of your book or in this. I mean, this is, this is what's been spent at Radcliffe, okay? And that's how it's been broken up, too. Do we want to pause for questions before we go into kind of the next section, which is sort of priorities driving the future?
Sure. Councilmember Earl.
I understand the 2.1, this is, this was one of my biggest concerns was the 2.1 million because I understood that it was focused on the gym, but the roof is the priority, right? And I, and you're saying it's vague because we really haven't completed the process. My question is, if we get into the process and they say, you can get the 2.1 million, but it's strictly for the gym, you can't use it for anything else. My concern would be, which I would love to see the gym, I get, and a lot of people would, I'm sure would like to see it, but if we did that, is there going to be more costs associated with, over the 2.1 million? So I guess my question is, if we can only do the gym and we get 2.1 million, is there a chance that it could go over the 2.1 million and then is it worth doing it at that point?
I think what you're asking is what can we do with 2.1 to make a gym?
Without going over 2.1.
Yeah, I, I think we would get half of a gym. I don't, yeah, I don't really know how to answer that.
Okay, because at this point, I don't think we have the funds to do 4 million. We can't spend 2 million of our own money. That's not going to happen. So if, so I guess the priority would be to shift that to the roof if we can shift it to the roof. And then whatever is left after the roof to apply it to the, to the rest. So, I mean.
Maybe we would, we would, we're kind of gearing up, though, to use the ARPA 4 million for the roof. That would free up the 2.1 to do the renovations to the rest of the building, maybe. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we're going to talk about HVAC, a real exciting topic that's very expensive.
Right.
And we're going to see that the money, you know, there is, 5 million sounds great until we start looking at these really big ticket items. So, you know, we do need to know for sure. I really, I mean, my feeling is that they're not going to say, if you can't do the gym, you don't get the money. But there's a lot of work involved into getting to the bottom of that. And actually, I know that that's not going to be true. There's processes for changing your scope. And because our JES statement is so encompassing of a renovation, I don't think that we're going to have a problem. But, you know, it was a very important part of the application and it was part of the vision and it was part of getting people on board. So we do have to like remember that. But, you know, this happens, projects, you know, you don't always know the cost. And then when something arises that is quite, you know, it takes priority, then we have to adjust.
Okay, I have more, but I'll wait till the end.
I have a couple about this.
Go ahead, council.
So this is definitely the one from Rashida, the 2.1. And it says miscellaneous funds from FRC and food pantry, the 80,000. That was paid for by the, by their budget, by the food pantry budget and FRC.
Yes.
Okay. And then just to be clear, so we got awarded and we have an award letter, but we don't have a finalized application.
Yep.
I did read some of this grant application and it was very vague. And I know that we talked about a couple meetings ago, that the mayor had also asked about the scope of work being changed or altered and they were pretty positive about that. So I know it wasn't just the gym, there were several things in there that were kind of vaguely listed. So I am very hopeful that we do get that money and we're able to use it where we need it. You said that about expanding the footprint, that it wouldn't include that for the environmentals. When you say that, does that mean expanding the footprint if we were to build the new gym? Because they wanted to build out?
Yeah, I mean, the way, we don't really have funds to build out of our footprint.
But I'm saying the environmentals.
And so the environmental study, if we're not expanding our footprint, it makes it a lot easier.
Okay. And the environmental study is just all inside or outside or what?
It is everything. So typically, when a city will buy a property, we would do a phase one environmental study. That did not happen. So I don't know why, maybe because the history was known. But there's typically, I mean, it's a few thousand dollars and it can take, you know, a month or so and it's just examining environmental, everything from, you know, I don't know, like historic land use, certain things that are within a mile away. I mean, it's a very technical study. And I forget what your question was.
Well, you answered it, you answered it.
Okay.
So before you started on all this, we hadn't met with the county about that stuff?
The county on?
Well, this grant that we're talking about, the 2.1. We had never had a meeting about it, everything until you started all this, right? All this hard work by you and Matt?
Correct. We, and we didn't, the HUD 2.1 is not meeting with the county.
I'm sorry, I misspoke, but I'm saying, we didn't, done anything yet.
We had no contact with any federal.
There was, the last thing I could see was in March of 2023, our award letter with a lot of instructions of what to do. And I will say, it is not uncommon, we, I mean, our congressional rep said, you're not alone. Like this, the HUD grant doesn't expire till 2031. They give us time. But what's important for us is the environmental review needs to occur so we can move ahead with our ARPA money. So that's the pressing issue for us because we don't want to hold that up because that we need to spend and we have projects to spend that.
Any other questions?
Not yet.
Okay, well, let's talk about our priorities, next slide, to drive the project and budget from here. I sort of talked about these, one, the grant compliance, just, you know, we want that 6 million, right? Thinking about spending with our future in mind, preserving the building and planning for long-term operation based on the staffing and funding we currently have. So eventually, myself, my team over there, we're going to be responsible for running this facility. And so we care very much about setting us up for success with infrastructure. And I know DPW has been spending a lot of time fixing and addressing things. So thinking about the future in mind. And then it's also very important that we begin to rebuild trust with you guys, improve our reporting, you know, allow for community and council input. And it's really important that we, you know, respect the processes. You know, this is government and we have a lot of processes in place and they are there for reasons that sometimes takes a long time. But it's important that we are, you know, following things to the level that they need to be done at. So these are the priorities driving, or that I'm proposing drive our budget and our project moving forward and our goals. So the next slide, you're going to see identification of remaining priorities. So right at the top, we see an environmental review with really a combination of some consultant and administrative. So $100,000, I believe that's, actually, I'm going to go through, so this is, this is a look at all of these at once. Then the remaining slides, we're going to go one by one and talk about each of these. So what you'll see is an anticipated cost. So again, a budget is usually a best guess for what something's going to cost. Sometimes we have more information to work from, so our guesses are closer. And sometimes it's how much can we do with this amount? So this is an initial, I guess revised look at what we have left, what I'm proposing we prioritize. So you are going to see the roof, you're going to see HVAC and boiler, those ADA restrooms, completing rooms that are sort of partial and just some miscellaneous things, moving the computer room to create a third cardio room. So basically adapting and getting another, like, sort of large space room for cardio, doing an improvement to the front entrance so we can get the staff out of the hallway, look at what we can do to the existing auditorium, and of course, Imagination Station, teaching kitchen, and that totlock courtyard. There's also a contingency line in there. And of course, you can't actually see the bottom, if you have the paper, you'll see the total as proposed is 5.5 million. And if you recall, there's really only 5 million. So it's, it's, this is suggesting a 500,000 out of general fund capital. So let's kind of dive in more specifically on each one of these. So the next slide is again, that environmental review. The estimate for this, this is kind of high. The actual environmental review should be around 8,000 or 9,000. But we have to leave some room for consultant and administration. When you start dealing with big federal funding, they really suggest you keep a 15% administrative budget because there are certain expertise that, that we don't have in our city to complete some of these requirements. You know, these, these big monies come with a lot of, a lot of technical things. So again, this is just recognizing, we've got to set aside some money for us to successfully execute this, to get the 2 million. And, you know, a status on this, I have reached out to four different consultant groups trying to get an idea of what they cost, what it entails to assist us with the HUD environmental staff. And a couple of them don't even have capacity. It's a very specialty thing when you get into HUD. So I got one company that has sent me to their specialist, who sent me to their specialist, who's out of state. And I finally talked to somebody who spoke this language and they're going to provide a proposal to get us started on this. So I'm hoping possibly by the end of the week to have something, and I believe it will be between 6,000 and 8,000, to get us started on this step. Next, the roof. You guys know we've got specifications in progress. I guess they're taking samples. I was really hoping we would have some better numbers tonight. They're going to be wrapping up, actually, I don't know, I hope it's next week, and getting us a bid package so that we can put this out to bid and then get a real number attached to it. This is a priority and a big ticket item. And as a reminder, the Radcliffe Center is like 7800 square feet. It's a big facility, it's a big building.
Thousand.
Oh, what did I say? 100, okay, I'm sorry, 78,000. Okay, let's go to the next item. So HVAC and boiler. So the Radcliffe has the original 1960s. There's been a handful of things that we've been fixing as we go. I've been told we've spent close to 200,000. I could only really find about 100 or 120, but there's been a lot of work done. We have a quote that quoted on replacing the whole thing and the boiler. It's very expensive and it's not a very fun item. I have talked to the school district. If you recall, this building was a middle school owned by the school district. They have a lot of buildings the same age. They just did similar projects and I think three of their schools with their recent bond. So I'm meeting with them to just go over that project and they were giving me some insight. It's a major project. It would require some project management, again, like what we're doing with the roof to facilitate the bid process, oversee the contract work and install it. So it is an estimated $2 million. And this, yeah, that's, I guess that's all I can say about that.
But we are thankful for the connection that we have with the schools. I put Erica in contact with the superintendent. He's been, you know, more than willing to help us, you know, because it was a school building, of course, and then helping us kind of decide how they did it, what was, what they learned. It was important to kind of go, kind of what they, they learned through their process, too.
Yeah. Next slide, the ADA restroom. So this was again, on the original sort of outline and scope of work. The estimate here is 300,000. And really on this one, it's how much can we do for this amount? There's multiple bathrooms. Something I've learned with ADA compliant things, it is important that we get a consultant because building code is not ADA code. You actually really need to have somebody specialized to help you from many, many things. It's not just the width of the door, it's the height of the sink and the signage and the way the doors swing and a lot of details. And I want to ensure that when we do it, we do it right so that we don't have to go back and redo it down the road because that does happen to many cities. They have to go back in and it happened to me in Ann Arbor. Our ADA bathroom was not ADA compliant. So this is important to me that we provide, that we update these bathrooms. They're just very tight. We have one that sort of qualifies. I think we need to do better for the long term, for all of the people using that bathroom. And I mean, there's multiple bathrooms in our facility. So the goal would be to work with a contractor and an ADA consultant and figure out what we can get done with this amount of money, how many of the bathrooms we can do. The next project, that front entrance. So when we're not doing a grandiose gym and a beautiful entrance, we still need something. This is, you know, in talking with staff and sort of a version of what was proposed. If you're familiar with walking into Radcliffe, on the right is a wall, on the On the other side of the wall is a room that is a storage room. So, the idea is to put a hole there at a countertop and turn that into a front desk area. So when people come in, they're greeted and they stop there at the desk. Again, I have not consulted a contractor. I would think we could make something happen with the $100,000 to clean up the front area. We need some signage. There's some other details that just need to be completed and finalized. So that's what this proposed line item is about. We keep going. Okay, the auditorium and the gym enhancement. You know, this is the most popular room in Radcliffe, right? Lot of uses, a big room is, is the best. A gym, you know, I think everybody wanted a gym. So we're going to grieve the loss of a brand-new gym, but we're going to look at what can we do here that could accommodate, whether it's some pickleball, basketball, I don't know if we get volleyball. Again, I don't know, but we need to bring in some people who are creative and, you know, one of the ideas is removing the stage, but this has not been fully flushed out. So this is just a hold spot for money, so that we can do something here. Some room, a room refit, is that the next one? So this I'd mentioned, you know, seeing the operations, seeing what is our busy classes, what we really need are these multipurpose rooms. You know, our dance rooms and our small cardio rooms are very busy and popular. It would be ideal if we could get one more kind of double room for cardio. It doesn't have to have the expensive wood floor, but it does need a little bit of ceiling, like removing the ceiling tiles, changing up the flooring, and then just moving into that non-finished, it's like the arts and craft room. I believe this had the most leaking. So there's just a couple of these things that we would like to complete, because again, once this, this pot of money's gone, we know there's not going to be a lot of pots of money sitting around for us. So we want to get these things done for long-term operation, for use for the community, and the things that are most popular. The miscellaneous rooms to finish, you know, this is kind of our punch list. We've got, you know, we're on a freeze, so we haven't moved ahead with any of these things. These are smaller-ticket things, but they do add up to 60,000. And so what you see, there'll be some slides to break out some of these, but they're just, you know, again, looking at some of these spaces, what do we need to finish them? So, let's, let's see, I'm trying to think. Some of the slides ahead will preview some of this, but not all of it. So there are some controllers we're lacking in Spaceport. The conference room, I got a slide on that. Exterior signage, wayfinding to the entrance, a lot of, not a lot, but I have known several people end up on the wrong side of the building. So these are just things that are important to get straightened out, have some better wayfinding to where you park and enter the building. I know we had a request for bike racks and some kind of just miscellaneous front entrance. The patio, finishing that up, finishing the heritage room, which is probably our second-most popular room. Then there's some remaining IT things. So that's where the 60,000 comes from, and we'll just kind of zip through the last slides, which outline a few of these rooms. So, the community conference room. We have a beautiful conference table in there. There's no chairs. The vision was to have a space where community groups could come and meet and hold their monthly meetings. We can have, we've talked about getting one of those mailboxes where each group could then receive their mail from year to year, no matter, you know, who changes in their president role or whatnot. So the idea for this is that community conference room, so chairs, the large-screen TV, and just some kind of finishing pieces are needed for that space. The next one is the barbecue courtyard. There are some incredible outdoor spaces at Radcliffe, a couple of courtyards and a patio. This one, we'd like to make it the barbecue courtyard, add some grills and picnic tables. This could be potentially for people to rent or use or have some kind of gathering. And, you know, around 4,500 is sort of proposed for that space. The patio, which looks lovely. This is one of my favorite spaces, to be honest, and I think there's a lot of potential for using it in a lot of different ways. We just want to add a few more seating styles, some picnic tables, and a ping-pong table, a couple of activi, activation items out there. And to just finish that up, so this is, I think, yeah, 3,000 for that. And then, the imagination station. Okay, a lot of incredible work has occurred here, and a lot remains to be done. So, we've got some quotes for the carpeting that is already picked out and themed for just under 14,000. A build-out for the remaining carpentry and kind of painting and all the sort of setup is, you guys can't see it, and, and your things, at the very end, I provided copies of that, which I believe you've seen as well, that outline kind of a, the specifics of what that 178 would cover. And then, once that's all done, we want to get the play items and all the things that make it so fun. There's also, in that would be some of the IT things, the finishing of the front gate. So, you know, this is proposed to take 300,000 on top of what has already been spent, to finish that. And the teaching kitchen, similarly, we did get sort of an estimate on the remaining build-out work, which entailed like flooring, ceiling, cabinets. Does not include equipment, such as cooktop, oven ventilation. We have met with some professional, with a few different entities to help, you know, give us some expertise and to help us learn what do we need. And keeping in mind, the, the vision for this is to mimic a home kitchen and to be a place where classes can occur from baking to sauce making. And we've got a, a teacher lined up who's really excited, but it is quite a lot involved in doing something like this. And I don't have a full equipment quote. It's, it's expensive when you get into ventilation, but there are different options, especially because we are trying to mimic a home kitchen and not a commercial kitchen. But we also want it to be nice, so that if people wanted to use it for some kind of, you know, giant cooking thing that they want to do, that it could be available. So, these numbers are really a best estimate at a realistic cost for what we think it would take to complete it. So 350,000. And I think the last item is just that tot lot courtyard. I know this was envisioned to be like a safety town. You know, I think it would be nice to add some of these things. It is a nice area. But that, I guess this is the completion of all the identified priorities that I'm sharing with you. And the next screen kind of takes us back to this screen. It's the same one, but now it's kind of that compilation and you see the, the funding, which really, there's only two sources now, the ARPA or the HUD, and, you know, the proposed 500,000, which is, you know, essentially the contingency. But that could go towards anything. So with that, I think I do want to go to one more slide, because I think it's important to really recognize that what is there now is really special. And, you know, the classes that have been added and the people using it and, you know, granted, it's a big building and it's not exactly busting at the seams right now, but, you know, the people using it, the, the classes that have grown, it is a really special place. And I think that, you know, if we're able to tie up some of these things and, and finish it as envisioned, you know, this is a great asset to the community. And there is 6.1 million dollars of outside funding that did come into it, you know, plus our match, which also really came from ARPA. So, I mean, there's a lot of goodness here. I know that there is a lot of frustration and anger. And, you know, I'm new to the scene and I, looking back at it, I can see, you know, why we're here tonight. And all I can do today is share what I've learned, you know, and where I think it can go, but I'm certainly open to the feedback from anybody here tonight. And I think, I mean, I think my very last slide is next steps, which for me is very HUD grant-centric right now. We are working on the first set of reimbursements. We were just getting clarification today for the Wayne County. And for me, again, project management, follow-up with you guys, finding out what kind of reporting do you want, you know? A monthly something? Like, let's figure that out, because I can do that moving forward. We can do a better job than 2.7 million, you know, just kind of a treasure hunt. So that concludes my presentation.
First of all, I'd like to thank you. This is an awesome presentation. I know some people had some concerns over previous reports we've gotten and things that haven't been said, and I think this hopefully cleared up a lot of it. And I think your visions and, and your approach to everything has been phenomenal on this. So, I personally want to thank you for, for this, and then I'll ask council if they have more questions.
Can I just ask one more? I have several, but I think I'm just going to ask this one for now. A lot of these, we're looking for someone to kind of oversee the process, you know, for the HVAC, for the roof. So would it make sense to get a project manager that can cover all the consulting and maybe keep in touch with all the grant work at the same time? Would that be more fiscally responsible and it would make it a smoother job for you? You did a fantastic job on this, both of you, and I greatly appreciate it. You know, it's, it's, sometimes less words is more information, and this is a good example of that, so thank you for that. But I'm wondering if a project manager would help you, because this is a great thing for Garden City, that there's a great potential here, that what's there already is, is incredible. But just going forward, maybe that would make it so that person's whole focus is just this? And as far as reporting, I would like to see at least a monthly report on the grant updates. And all, and then the last thing is, can we get this online?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
It'll be sent to you digitally, and then also we'll have it online. And then also, just a kind of a quick, just a quick response, that would be wonderful. We just need to find that person. So I, I don't know if that person exists, but we're, we're going to look and see, so.
Well, and there's two really large, big projects, right? Roof, when we kind of have that in place now. And then, the HVAC, which, you know, was really tying to the HUD grant, because part of the thought, too, is, you know, seeing the difficulty and going back and the reporting requirements, we do want, I mean, using the big project for a big funding thing like HVAC is going to help us when it comes to the reporting and the submission for reimbursement. So, a project management is absolutely, I think, the way to go. And, you know, that, that 100,000, that's like ER and sort of administration, to me, that's kind of where I'm hoping to fit that in. So that we're in place for the reimbursement to get the money.
And the schools found that also, you know, with the HVAC.
That was their advice.
That was their advice also, so.
Yeah.
Going off what Brian said, do we have an employee in our city that could do those things, like with HVAC, like could DPS? Are they equipped to do that if they were in charge of the administration and stuff like that for the HVAC?
Like the entire HVAC, boiler? Who wants to answer that?
I don't know. I don't believe so. I mean, when, when, what we found out with the schools went through, it was, they used words I didn't even know, you know, so, which is easy, you know, which is easy to do. So I'm not sure that we could allocate somebody that's already on staff to do it.
Okay, well, I'm seeing a shake of the head, so I'm going to say no.
I mean, sometimes, like, you know, when we think about our house, doing a HVAC, it's, it's just the scale, and again, the responsibilities of a, you know, a city building, there's just a lot more considerations. And especially, like, this project, because, you know, the environmental review is going to do an asbestos survey, I think radon, you know, there's lead-based paint stuff. So those are all going to be part of that process as well. And that's where you, you don't want to mess around. I mean, it is expensive, and I, I don't think anybody here is like, yay, 2 million for a HVAC. You know, it's just, it's long-term, it's structural, and it's, it's an investment, and it's better federal money than us trying to say to the community, hey! You know? So I think for, for those reasons, it's really our only option.
And then, this isn't so much a question for you, but maybe council, that 2.9 was reallocated to Radcliffe without consent from us. That originally was the fire department, the police department, and city hall. We didn't do any work at city hall. And we know the police department still needs a lot of stuff. They, they need a lot of stuff. So, just to say that 2.9 automatically goes to Radcliffe, I think that's something we need to talk about, if there's other things that need to...
Well, you mean the 1.3 or the original? So it was 2.7 and 1.3 of that went?
Yeah.
And, and you're right, it was not in a budget.
Right, it was not in...
It was not in the 23 budget. It was in, as a capital funding in the 24.
Right, but the capital funding was listed as police, fire, and we got the fire...
And I will tell you that, you know, there, there were decisions made, you know, by the former city manager, just a different style. And I can tell you that the staff here today would have really liked to have seen those things proceed differently. Because, you know, the good news is, all the money is gone into the city. I mean, it's here, there's no, you know, shadiness of, you know...
Right, money being taken, we spent it.
But it wasn't done in a way that was transparent, and there was just things that you should have been informed in, you know, or had a pardon. And I do think part of it was that ARPA was just this unprecedented occurrence for anybody in government, and so it was, you know...
I do want to say thank you. Your presentation, compared to presentations in the past, was very detailed, and I think it's exactly what council and our residents wanted to see. So I really appreciate both you guys putting so much hard work into it. I did want to say that I appreciate DPS, Brad and Steve, and all the hard work you guys have done over there. It's amazing how much money that we've spent. And I didn't know if the DPS hours and all that was included in that budget?
No, and that, thank you for bringing that up. I meant to say that, that that is, is not in here.
Do we have any idea of that?
I, there...
I mean, I don't want it now, I'm just asking if...
We're still collecting that information, because we were gathering it to show, you know, as part of our match as well. So it's important to...
Did you say that was in-kind for the match, for their work?
For us, it was showing the match, but we didn't even, we don't even need that, because we have so much other. But I think it's important to recognize that as well.
So initially, we thought that we were going to have to show hours, how much, how much was spent, just in DPWs, to what we consider that in-kind match. But we were, we were told by the county, which, actually, the county, just I want to give a shout-out to Candace Wilks and the county who is, who we're meeting with. The county wants to see us succeed. They want to see the city succeed, they want to see the money spent. HUD is not as friendly. So, but, so I think that's good. And, and she's provided, provided us with a lot of information about the reimbursement, about the in-kind, and things that we are able to use to show them that we've done what we're supposed to do, so.
So before now, when you started, we didn't have any information about the reimbursement, but we do now?
Yes.
Okay. And then one thing that was left off the scope of work that we didn't talk about was the parking lot. Is that, it's not in any plans right now?
Well, that initial number is very low.
Mm-hmm, yes, for a giant, giant parking lot? So that's something maybe we can get grant money for down?
Yeah, and, you know, that, that is the other thing I do want to mention, is, you know, a strategy for moving forward, like, you know, if some of the items, like, that we can't get to, you know, I'm always thinking about, what's another grant? And, you know, in speaking with Wayne County, there may be money left at the end, so we want to position ourselves to be ready for that. And, you know, I think we do that best by getting up to speed on our... And, you know, I think we do that best by getting up to speed on our current stuff, and having these visions and plans ready to go. Because, you know, there are some projects that I think would be easier to go pursue a grant for. So whether that's the teaching kitchen, or even like the totlot thing, you know, like those are areas that are easier to get grants from. It's a lot harder to go and get people to get excited about your HVAC.
Right.
You know, and the parking lot, you know, is such a tough one, because that's another super unfun and...
Yeah.
And who knows? There's a, a big project coming at the middle school, you know, for their football field.
Yep.
And if we can just develop our relationship with the schools, and maybe there's partnership opportunities for that.
That would be wonderful, if we would keep that going. I have already heard that you've talked to the superintendent, and he just loved everything that you had to say, so that's great.
And also maybe just a right sizing of the parking lot, too.
Right.
You know, so that's part of it, too.
One thing I did want to say, as you mentioned that about the teaching kitchen, I know our residents are so excited about that. I've heard so many comments, online and in-person, that people are really looking forward to that, to doing classes or date night, or, you know, everybody just going there and saying, hey, we're doing Christmas cookies, and 10 people can come and cook together. So people are really looking forward to that. I did have a couple of questions that I don't think can be answered tonight, but maybe we could get answers for. I asked last night about, we have it in the budget that a half a million dollars of revenue coming from Radcliffe. I would just be interested to know what, what that is coming from. And then we talked about the roof, and we're supposed to get a couple inches of rain in the next 24 hours. Are we ready for that?
And, what was that?
We're supposed to get a couple inches of rain in the next 24 hours? Are we all ready for that?
Well, everything's holding now. The repairs that have been done are in place, it's just not a long-term.
So if we get the bid in for the roof, and then the environmentals and stuff are not done, so we have to wait to put the roof on?
Yeah, we have to get the environmental review going.
Do we have an estimate on, like, how long?
Yeah, I, you know, we're, we're lucky that it's, I mean, the environmental review is, the key part is the process of doing it, because, I'm not, I shouldn't say this, but I'm not expecting a lot of environmental issues to come up. But the process of doing is very important, it's very, hinges on a few different things. So what was the thing I mentioned to you that...
Section 106?
Section 106, it's in...
Historical preservation, actually, portion.
Historical preservation. So sometimes the state will have up to 30 days to provide that info to, like, our consultant. So I would say two months is...
We should have it done by then?
Yeah.
Okay.
We could have it done, but then we don't know if it'll be approved by HUD, is the other issue.
Okay. And I just got a couple of easy questions. How are we doing, like, getting teams and stuff for the esports? Is that getting going besides just the one?
That's a great question. There's a lot to pursue for some of the rooms that are completed, for how do we now manage that? So I've been working with the school district, trying to find out what sort of collaboration and what we can offer. I don't have...
Our school district or multiple school districts?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's going to take us some time. And, you know, some of these things are taking a lot of time, and, you know, but our staff is trying to develop the card room use, our spaceport's been going pretty well, and then the movie theater, we're developing, like, some party packages for the fall that we'll start to see.
The cheerleading squad is ready for that, so...
Cheer...
Yeah, the cheerleaders are going there. The other thing that we talked about, you mentioned earlier about a budget and sustaining Radcliffe going forward, has there been any work done yet on getting that budget, like, what we need every year to keep things going? Because obviously, we're putting money into it. And so one of the things that I would be curious to know is, what is our monthly or yearly subscription cost for all the things at Radcliffe? Everything for the teen tech room, the esports, all the little game pads? I keep seeing all these things on the paid invoices, and it looks like a lot per month. So I was curious to know that, and if there's ways that we can do that. I also did hear that we're having maybe a couple of problems with some computers in the teen tech. Is that getting worked out? Is that stuff covered under warranty, or...
Yeah, we've had, I mean, when you're dealing with technology, there's going to be things that aren't working, but we've been able to quickly address those, and we're developing our contact and who's going to help us, because that's, you know, for me, walking into this highly technical area, I'm thinking, oh my gosh, the maintenance of this, you know, it's a lot.
Did we not previously have a company set up to...
We had some internal staff, right? So Zach has been our IT guy, doing a phenomenal job, you know, but he has a lot of other responsibilities. So moving ahead, we need to have a, a plan, and we are developing that, and we've had some assistance that came out, and it wasn't super expensive. So it's going to depend on the issue, but that, and I am very interested in the, the annual operating cost for all these things as well, and it's just too soon for me to know.
Okay.
But part of the technology, our normal contract with Skyworks, Sky, yeah, Skynet, it doesn't include this. So, so it's outside of their scope, so.
But we're looking for a company that can handle that?
Yes.
Okay. Just a couple more. Are we looking at getting any more renters for Radcliffe?
Renters?
Mm-hmm.
I'm always going to be open to renters, and, I mean, certainly, when you ask about the income and the budget, that's going to be important for us long-term, so.
So along those same lines, I know previously, our previous city manager did not like the idea of renting out, like, the gym and things like that for events, except for to nonprofits. Are we, a lot of residents are saying, this is our community center, we want to rent that room and...
Yeah, we are, we are relooking at that very closely, very hardly. I mean, I think of it both as, it is a revenue generator, but it's also a service to the community.
That's exactly what I mean, it's a service.
If you need some space to have a party, we got some cool spaces. So we are working on event policies, and that, that will be coming.
Okay.
Like a rental policy?
Yeah, rental policy, we have some of that right now for, like, meeting spaces, but this will be for, for parties or special things.
I know we're making a conference room for clubs and, and that. How large is that? Like, how many people? Because, just curious.
How many chairs do we say? It's either 14 or 16.
14. 14 chairs. 14 is what the slideshow...
Yeah.
And then there'll be a little space on the side, you know, that we could have a row of chairs if there was more, that wouldn't be at the table or something.
Then I guess my last question is, council has the stop on all spending at Radcliffe. How are we doing all these things if there's a stop spending?
Well, that's one of the next steps that we're hoping to get sorted, because I want to be ready to move ahead with the environmental review as soon as we get that proposal. So we'll need that.
Do we have the, the people to do the work for the, like, the teaching kitchen and imagination station to move forward if we authorize that spending?
Yeah, and I guess my question to you all is, do you want to just proceed with everything? Do you want to get hard costs on our two big things before?
Like, I'm a little concerned that, what if we spend money...
That we don't have.
That we don't have, is my concern with these things that are, we'd love to have and we, we want. I mean, I'm a prolific baker, I love it all, you know? But we really, the HVAC, the roof are just key. And then we do have those few little things, the entranceway, those little things that could just finish off what was kind of restarted, we're looking at, too.
I know...
Because this, like, and like, the teaching kitchen could be a, a stop. We've stopped it, even though we had some authorization to go forward, we can't because environmental review won. But then also, the, it's a room that hasn't been touched at all, really, so it's like, not halfway there, like imagination station. And so it's at a better spot to hold, as opposed to halfway done or something.
Yeah, that was, that would be my question, like, the imagination station, where you said you had the carpets ordered. Is that something we can just, we can get, at least bring it in? So I know it's probably a special-made carpet or whatever, or...
Yeah, I mean, all of the order is put together and quoted, we just haven't moved ahead.
But we haven't paid for them, so...
We haven't paid for them. So, and I mean, that's, I guess, what I'm, or we're looking for from you guys is, you know, moving forward, do you want to, I mean, yeah, do you want to just go on everything? Like, there is some hesitation of, should we hold off till we get these numbers and adjust accordingly, or keep that? I mean, I love the teaching kitchen, I think we're going to get it, it just might need to be the last thing, because it would be a great grant seeker if we ran out. I think we would be able to find the funding for it, you know? But I also know it's an important one, and people are really excited about it, so...
They are.
Those are your decisions.
You know, more than like the totlot courtyard, that kind of stuff, it's much more minimal cost.
I would almost think that if we're going to have to stop the hold on it, if we're going to have to reengage, and we've set up the parameters, that we need the major cost first, but we have to reengage so they can spend money to get the environmental...
Yeah.
And my wife is hoping you get the teaching kitchen so I can go learn, so, thank you.
One other question I had about the plan. So in the past, it was kind of like, spend whatever you want, we're going to get this room done. And obviously, you're very organized by this presentation, so moving forward, when we say the teaching kitchen, you, you have it as a plan and a budget to say, this is how much we're doing, Kelly's doing this much work, and we're going to do this, this, and this for this much money.
If you want to know how much the measuring cups cost, we'll get you that. I mean...
I don't, I just want to make sure that it's done appropriately.
Yeah, I hear you. I, I, I can commit to doing a much better job so you see. And if, if we say it's going to be $10,000 and that goes over, I'm going to show you, and then we're going to say, so that means we're going to have to do something here less.
Right, I don't want to see 56 things that are $9,886.
I think that's a very fair request.
Do you, do you think in, in a couple weeks at our next council meeting, we might have some numbers where we could move forward with, maybe the, again, I'll go with the imagination station, because it's halfway done, and we, you have obviously your budget for that. And I know it's summertime with all the kids out, they would love to see that as much as, as soon as possible, but even some other things, do you think we'd have some numbers to maybe make some decisions?
I think for sure the environmental review, and we're hoping the roof for certain, is, we're going to at least have a bid package to go out, and we'll put out for bid, put out for two weeks, see what we get. And then that'll be, let's hope, what we get is less than what they project is our hope, but...
So maybe waiting two weeks before we make any decisions on going forward with money? We have some bigger numbers?
When do we get to the imagination station? Because we, we've got to do things a little differently than how we have been doing it. And so I think that we would, we've got a proposal, and, I mean, we would have to come to council, right? And get that permission. And, you know, I think, I think two weeks to let us see if we can get this roof number and get our environmental review going. And then in the meantime, we've got a lot of work to do to kind of get better numbers on some of the other projects.
You know, the other one that I'd like to see you look into is the entrance area, to get our people out of the hallway, because that is inconvenient where they're at. And if you could look at those numbers also?
Yeah.
Also, the entrance area, which Erica didn't say, but we had talked internally, it's important also, just kind of a security factor.
Yeah.
They're, they're sitting the hall, I think it just would be better that there's a check-in spot before they really get in the building. You know, they're already in when they're in, so.
Okay, something positive. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, any more questions?
Something positive, going forward, are we advertising more and doing more to get our residents and other residents in Radcliffe? Because it seems like before you, that wasn't done very much. Are we doing other things?
Yeah, that's going to be really important for us, letting people know what we have going on. A lot of the staff work very hard to do a lot of programs and put it out, but if it doesn't get to the people, that's kind of a heartbreak, because all that work, and then they don't, you know, people don't know about it. That's really important. We have a lot on our plate right now to sort through and...
Do we have any newer employees, or employees that are dedicated to advertising, or...
No. We were hoping that we were going to see that new communications position to get a little more support for our stuff, but, you know, I'm looking at some part-time positions, if there's people in the community that can, you know, be interested to help us, because just our website and our social media, I mean, these are very time-consuming, but very important, public-facing, you know, resources that we need to have updated, and we need to let people know what's going on. So marketing is always going to be important for us. We have the rec connect that we're trying to get out, this, I mean, we're working on it, staff's working on it now, and, you know, as we bring out new things... The rec connect is only twice a year, so it's hard, right now, planning for our November, December stuff, getting instructors to commit. So we also are looking at electronic communications through our database, a monthly newsletter, let people know what's happening, how to sign up. So, you know, hopefully, you're going to start seeing those things, you know, in the community, come and get your membership, you get in the database, and you're going to get an amazing monthly email. You know, we want people to come and visit.
I like the letter that you sent out to everybody in the database about a month ago or so, and it had the click-on for spaceport and, you know, the link and a couple other things. I think that in lieu, if you don't have the people to get the stuff up electronically otherwise, picking out some of the high points that are out there in the different, the senior section, the kids' section, whatever, and the things that are highly attended especially, and putting out a quick little thing like that, and I know it's never quick, but something like that would at least be furthering the objective. Okay. I have a couple of things.
Go ahead.
Stacy hit on almost all of them I had written down, so that, that was good. So mine are basically, you're just talking about getting the information out there, marketing the school system, they have a way to, you know, so any of that stuff, that would be at no cost to us. And since you're developing a great relationship with Mr. Fisher, you know, that's, that's one way to do that. I just want to clarify, so Matt and yourself, you're both administering the grants now?
We haven't figured out who's going to be. So we're, we're either tossing a coin, or we're not sure. So just like I said yesterday, we, you know, is it going to be Erica? And then as we go forward, the new city manager, I don't know. And, and we also, we want to talk to both of our funding agencies to see, who do they want to see? Or who do they want to have, have contact with? So far, it's been Erica, but we, of course, we're having the joint meetings with Wayne County, and those are, are working out quite well. So Candace, I think, likes both of us, and we have a good communication line with her. And even the last, the last Teams meeting we did, she pulled her, her boss in even, to just talk about some items, too, so.
Okay. The heritage room, you had down about $5,000 for art. This is all, you know, small amounts of money that, that I'm talking about at this point. But I was wondering, again, if you could maybe collaborate with the schools? Our seniors over at the high school have amazing, just amazing talent, and maybe we could, you know, on a revolving basis, put their artwork in there.
Yeah, I would love that.
That wouldn't cost us anything.
And we talked about even just historical photos of Garden City, or just things to really, you know, showcase the community, build community, but I love, absolutely love that idea.
The other thing is the barbecue courtyard. Kind of finding out what the organizations are in the city, especially the charitable organizations. We have the garden club. I'm sure that the garden club would be more than willing to come in there and, and do some planting, to donate some plants, that sort of thing. We have Kiwanis, who our main focus is children. We have Goodfellows. Their focus is Christmas, but we also have funds where we do other things, you know, as, as long as it applies to children. So there's a lot of community organizations that I'm sure would step in and make donations for things along that line. And the last thing, and I'm really hesitant to bring this up, but I go to the conference of Western Wayne, I go to the meetings for the conference of Western Wayne, and we have our federal, you know, our senators are there, Rashida Tlaib, Debbie Dingell, and they really pushed in the past to have any monies that we got, the federal grant money, to have that appropriated to a project. Okay? So we did that. Now there's a huge concern that there could be a clawback of any monies not spent. So we were warned at the last meeting about that, and I just wanted to bring that to you, so the quicker we can get these projects going, the better we're going to be, because that's a very real possibility at the end of this year, so. But I also want to thank both of you. Fantastic presentation. Along with, with Stacy, I want to, you know, thank DPS, I know they've done a lot of work over there, Marge, everybody, Mr. Williams, everybody that's been involved over there. It's a fantastic place, it really is, so.
Okay, further comments? Further comments? Go ahead, council member, what?
Thank you for joining along and taking this on headstrong with the interim city manager. So I appreciate having all of the numbers put together and on paper, as well as all the other city employees that were involved putting some of these things together. The only question that I want to make sure with on this is the environmental review. Does any sort of our hold need to be lifted before that money can be spent? I know it's under 10,000, most likely administrative. But is it something you guys can do before, two weeks from now at our next council meeting?
I mean, my understanding is no.
Correct, yeah, there's no spending.
You guys-
We would come with a, our plan is, you know, in two weeks, we're hoping that we'll have at least a request before the council. And then it would be up to you to decide at that time.
Okay, that's why I wanted, I just wanted to see what the idea on that was, because I wasn't gonna make a motion tonight.
But maybe you could revisit the parameters of that so that you don't get stuck in.
I'm sure we can make a motion to lift portions of it at time going forward. With each project as dollar amounts are more understood going forward. But yeah, I do appreciate, again, all of the city employees' times that went into everything over the last few years, as well as the last couple of weeks getting these put together. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I have just one more. Because you've both worked other places, do we know what other cities do for the grant administrator? Like is it always the city manager, is it always an outside person, or you have any input on it?
It depends on your city. I know my previous place, we had park planners that would administer, we had two of them. But even they have project management, so they manage, project manage, you know.
And in the former community that worked in the city of Wayne, when we had large projects like this, it was handled completely differently. And there was a company that was hired, often it was like a design-build company. And they would, they would handle, of course, the, putting together the specifications and then also help with the bid. But then they also did the grant administration and also they did the sign-off on the payments to the contractors also. So that it was kind of all in one place. So then, then we could get the reimbursement was done easier because it was all kind of in one place held. Instead of, you know, 17 different vendors, all this. It was an agreement that this vendor was gonna pay those vendors, but they had the responsibility for that, which it hasn't happened. But we, we know that these two large items, the HVAC and roof, if we get somebody that can handle it, then we'll, we know that at least that portion. I kind of, I told Erica and Brian that just, when you think you need to be, do reimbursements, like for example, for the elections, and Brian Smith knows, whenever we knew we were gonna be able to get a chance to get any money back, you always make another copy of that check request and you just put it in the folder, just like, that's money I'm gonna get back. And that makes it easier to do the reimbursement. And so we need to focus on that. And of course, it's harder to do the reimbursement because we're trying to scrape, catch up, yeah. So but we're, if we're gonna get that first one in, I hope we get the money soon.
So moving forward, if we get more grant money, let's hope, right? If we get a lot more and we do bigger things like the park bond or something that's coming up this year, next year, whenever, it would be advised that we get a project manager. I know our mayor talked about that and I think all of us council members had talked about that, getting a project manager. So that's something that we need to make a solid request that we do that. And then I just think we-
It could be consultant-based.
Okay. And then one person we forgot to say thank you for all their hard work is Kelly Williams. So thank you for everything you've done at Radcliffe, it's beautiful.
One more thing. HVAC, most of our HVAC over there is on the roof, is that?
What's that?
The HVAC is located on the roof. So is the HVAC first?
And it's boiler too, so the boilers are those big giant things on the-
Yeah, would we be doing HVAC before the roof?
Well, that is part of the, the roofers' comments where you really want to be coordinating because there's a lot of like dead or non-functioning units, help me out here, yeah. Yeah. And so it does make sense.
Kind of want to do it together, don't you, in coordination, so.
I mean, the last thing we want to do is put a new roof on and then the HVAC guys, oh, I gotta cut a hole here. You know, so we want to make sure that those are coordinated and we're cognizant of that, so.
Okay. At this point, comments from the general public, three minutes, non-agenda items only. Anybody wishing to speak? Ms. Perry Dorr.
Hi, I'm Melton. The road in between the junior middle school, I'm old. The road between there is a big concern for a lot of people. So my thought would be if any part of the parking lot is addressed, it would be that road.
That is, that is school property and they are planning on, and they are planning on redoing that.
That is not what's been circulating, excellent, thank you.
As soon as their construction is done, they will.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Any other comments?
Mayor, I know we talked about this before, about having a workshop and then saying the public can't come and give their input about it. Can we please talk about that and maybe put that on the agenda for the next meeting? We talked about this before.
Sure, I'm just going off of what the-
I know, I'm just saying that's something we need to talk about.
The rules I've been given that-
But we make the rules, so.
Right.
You know, all these people came today to talk about Radcliffe, now we're telling them, you can't talk about Radcliffe. So just for our next meeting, I would like to talk about that and address maybe changing that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Opal Loveland, Burton Street. Thank you, Matt, thank you, Erica, thank you to DPW and Marge. I'm really sorry you were all put in this position. It is no surprise to me, but I am sorry. During the first road bond, the parking lot, Mueller Field, was spent money, like almost a million dollars. So even though the parking lot at Radcliffe needs to be done, I hope we will not be dipping into our road bond because our road bond is for neighborhood roads. It was also for sidewalk, but that got removed from it. So I'm asking you to please not dip into the road bond for a parking lot again. Is the health department involved at all when you have a cooking room and outside patio with grilling? Because I know-
Fire marshal, licensing, all of that, we're getting advice on. But yeah, absolutely, even the, the hope to expand the snack bar, there are certain steps that are being taken.
Okay, because when I volunteered for the farmer's market, the health department came out when we had grilling demonstrations and that and there's a lot of rules then.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I just want to say, when I attended GCU, the former city manager said you have to get the right person, the right people on the bus and you gotta get the wrong people off the bus. I believe he made a huge mistake, a huge mistake, when our former grant writer was harassed to the point of resignation. So I'm gonna say, I miss Monica Fulton and I think our city would benefit from her services. I'm not sure she wants to get involved, but that was a huge mistake to drive Monica Fulton away from our community. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Further, yes, sir.
Mayor, Council, Anthony Tackett, Fairfield Street. First, Mr. Miller, Ms. Smith, thank you very much. It was a very enlightening presentation. It was also very comforting to see some professionalism presented in regard to this project. It wasn't covered tonight, but I know it's been covered at other meetings. What is the state of the renters at Radcliffe Center? And have we gotten any type of performance on that? Are we being paid or are we still allowing somebody to put their feet up on our couch? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have that at next council meeting or unless we?
We're hoping, you know, I can give a little bit, and then I'm for certain, we made a request to the city attorney to begin the notice to quit. So when he did so, he entered the wrong amount, so we're working getting the correct amount put on. There were two line items and he just kind of transpose the lines, I guess. So we did identify that last Friday. I sent an email today to him to say, what are, what are you gonna do to fix this? But a notice of quits been started. I know that it's been sent to Mr. Nixon and we're gonna start on the eviction process unless he pays.
The other renters paid, hasn't, aren't they? So, there you go.
Everyone is almost up to date. But at the next meeting, just a precursor, we're going to have a request for an adjustment to, it takes a village because there were some things that the city did not perform on and there are unpaid portions. But I'm going to make a request to the council that we bring everything to balance by what has been paid with an explanation of what wasn't, so.
Okay, that'll be next meeting. Any other comments?
John Murray, Lather Street. My question, we're talking Radcliffe, but nobody's discussed the overhead, like what's gonna cost to cut the grass? How are we accounting the cost of our utilities? We heard of what, a big DTE bill? Is that money going into an account that is gonna take care of that? How are we gonna divide the fiscal policies of Radcliffe, the ice rink and Maplewood? Because they're all different entities. My other concern is what, what kind of function is going on? There's some that's actually being done with our resources to educate, take care of it. We're also renting facilities there. Are we not acting as a commercial, design, manufacturing, management corporation? Does that not put us in a different type of category for permits and policing that? Because we do have to maintain insurance. So how are we looking into that stuff?
I'm sure for the rentals and that, Ms. Smith has that all covered. As far as maintenance, I'm sure they're all gonna be handled the same. And I believe Ms. Smith already addressed the rental and how we're gonna, going forward, revenue versus expenses coming into Radcliffe. Further comments? Okay, no further comments. I, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.